Good evening to you all and welcome to the Monday, September 25th, 2017 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you're all here with us this evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Madam Clerk, would you like to call and roll, please?
Ms. Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Z may be participating by electronic participation. Mr. Z?
Here.
Mr. Snyder's the one I think could be by phone. That's okay, no worries, no worries.
Mayor Tarter.
I'm here, I'm here. So, I know we have, one of our members is going to attempt to participate by telephone, which is permitted under Virginia rules. Do we have a motion regarding that?
I move that council approve electronic participation by Councilmember Snyder in tonight's meeting for personal reasons pursuant to the policy on participation in meetings through electronic means as adopted by council in Resolution 2015-26.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Welcome aboard, Dave.
Well, thank you very much. I understand that I have to identify where I am, which is, I'm in Ottawa, Canada, for stakeholder meetings around the NAFA negotiations. So, thank you all very much for giving me the opportunity to participate electronically. Thank you so much.
Uh-huh, thank you, and thanks for joining us from our neighbors to the north. Do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? The ayes have that as well. And we do have, I guess, the presentation by the Northern Virginia Community College, Mr. Shields, that's been put off for a week, is that right?
Yes, Mayor Tarter, they've requested a date of October 10th, which will be Tuesday meeting because it's Columbus Day, and so we'll schedule that with them on the 10th.
Sounds good. We do, however, have a special proclamation, which I'm going to ask the Vice Mayor to read if she would, regarding the Baha'i faith and all the contributions they do to our communities. We are delighted to have some representatives here this evening and would welcome you maybe to come forward after the proclamation is read to receive it, and you're welcome to say a few words as well if you'd like. So, Vice Mayor Connolly?
This is a proclamation commemorating October 21st through 22nd, 2017, as the bicentenary of the birth of Baha'u'llah, whereas the Baha'i community has been part of the City of Falls Church for nearly 50 years, embracing members from all races, nationalities, and cultural backgrounds, and whereas justice, unity, and peace are an essential need of humanity, and whereas in the 19th century, Baha'u'llah, the founder of the Baha'i faith, taught principles of human dignity and capacity, and of fellowship and collaboration among the followers of all religions, races, nationalities, and cultures, and whereas the Baha'i community of Falls Church strives to apply these principles to the material and spiritual life of the city, and enrich the city through the regular community-building activities, open to all, and through local service initiatives, and whereas October 22nd, 2017, marks the 200th anniversary of the birth of Baha'u'llah, which is being commemorated in communities across the country and worldwide, and whereas the Baha'i Falls Church and their families, friends, neighbors, and colleagues are commemorating this bicentenary with a potluck picnic and special program, open to all, in Cherry Hill Park on Saturday, October 21st, from noon to 4:00 p.m.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, do hereby commemorate October 21st and 22nd, 2017, as the weekend of the bicentenary of the birth of Baha'u'llah in the city, and urge all residents to promote diversity, justice, unity, and peace in our local community, in the United States and in the world. Congratulations. Would you all like to come forward, maybe even say a few words, you're welcome to?
My name is Leely Miller-Murren, and on behalf of the Local Spiritual Assembly of the Baha'is of Falls Church, I'd like to thank you for this wonderful honor of the declaration, Mr. Mayor and City Council. As was mentioned in the declaration, this year marks the 200th anniversary of the birth of Baha'u'llah. Very briefly, for no more than three minutes, I'll explain that Baha'u'llah was born in 1817, in a land then known as Persia, now known as Iran, and at that time brought laws and teachings that were very revolutionary at the time, things like the elimination of racism, the promotion of equality of women and men unambiguously from its inception of the faith in that land of Persia, the harmony of science and religion, the elimination of prejudices, and the unity of mankind. And so, the Baha'i faith fundamentally believes in the oneness of religion, that really religions are all from God and all chapters of the same book, and in the oneness of humanity, no matter what our race, our religion, our educational status, our economic status is. The Falls Church Baha'i community is a small but mighty community, not unlike the city itself, which has been a part of the fabric for over 50 years, as was mentioned, in Falls Church. Through regular community-building activities, open to all, that include devotional gatherings, children's classes, junior youth programs, study circles, service projects, discussion gatherings, we've been honored to be a part of the creation of a community in Falls Church that's dedicated to the recognition that all of humanity is really one human family. In these divisive times, we feel particularly compelled to raise our voices, along with like-minded neighbors and friends, for justice, unity, and peace, and we invite all to celebrate with us on October 21st for the picnic celebration that was mentioned, that will be particularly fun for children, adults, and family alike. So, thank you so much for this honor.
Thank you, we really appreciate your contributions to our community. If you'd like, maybe we could all come forward, we can hand you the proclamation, we'll get a photo.
Justice, unity, peace, and potluck. Especially the food part. That's a Tarter, I can't believe Tarter's not involved. Don't need my keys. All right, this is as good as I get. You betcha. It's better than Halloween. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming out.
All right, great, stop, don't go away, turn around. Thanks for coming. Everyone, good to see you, thanks.
All right, thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Hello, Dave.
And here he is, the man who made it all possible.
Peter.
Good to see you, good to see you. Very nice job, yeah, good.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
All right, pictures, whoop, don't go away.
You have to tighten up.
Squeeze in.
Squeeze in.
So, let's put the kids, put the kids right in the middle.
Put the kids in the middle.
And maybe you guys want to slide down a little bit.
Turn it a little sideways, turn it a little sideways.
Got to move quick, because our comm is ruthlessly efficient. But wait. Potluckin' photos. Okay, all right. Bravo.
Do you have a gift for all the City Council members? Actually, this is a new publication that came out. In honor of the bicentenary, and there's quite a few.
Thank you.
But if you can just in there about Baha'u'llah itself.
Send us a reminder about the potluck.
Cool.
Nice looking book, huh?
Yeah.
She did the Falls Church Division statement booked up like this, wouldn't that be nice?
Okay, thank you all very much. Let's move on to our next item. Madam Clerk, is there anyone here to receive or give the oath of office for new boards and commissions? All right, let's move on to the receipt of public comments. Could you start with the summary of written comments?
Brian and Colleen Rye submitted concerns regarding class size and the lack of covered walkways to classroom trailers at Mount Daniel Elementary. Jamison sites expressed objections to the revised location of the proposed Capital Bike Share location on Northwest Street. Mark Quave asked the city to provide more detail on the risks that could be associated with the GMHS bond, and Mary Chavez submitted excerpts from the East Falls Church area plan to council following up on recent discussions of compatible height with regard to special exceptions requirements for mixed-use development transitions to residential neighborhoods.
All right, thank you very much. We will now move on to the receipt of public comments. So, if anyone would like to speak, you're welcome to do so, either now or when an item of interest to you comes up. All you need to do is fill out one of the speaker slips here, the red speaker slips, and hand them to the clerk. We ask you keep your comments to three minutes, if you would, and state your name and address for the record. I know our first speaker has a PowerPoint, so we'll give you a little bit extra time. We are delighted to have a senior from George Mason High School, Ann Newman, so come on down, she's done a project on lead gold, excuse me?
It's Newbern.
Oh, Newbern, I'm sorry. Ann Newbern, welcome, come on down.
Thank you.
We are delighted to have you here with us. We understand this is a Girl Scout project, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic.
So, my name is Ann Newbern, and my address is 2012 Garden Court. I'm a city resident and member of Girl Scout Troop 1251. I'm here today to tell you about my Gold Award project. You are probably familiar with the Eagle Scout Award. The Gold Award is the highest Girl Scout equivalent, and it's the highest honor received in Girl Scouts. My project has been approved by the local Girl Scout Council. My project is to create a mural increasing public art in the city. I'm working on the design and asking for public input. The mural will highlight the city, the history, architecture, or people of Falls Church City. I'm currently working with the Falls Church Arts and Humanities Council to find a location. Concurrent to finding a location, I will be sending a survey to get the public input on the design. I've already gathered some feedback from my school, which I will share. My hope is that once complete, this mural will be something all residents can enjoy and be proud of celebrating our town. So, here's a few slides that I'd like to share. So, I first got inspired to do a mural when I saw this mural in Chicago, Illinois, in a small town called Beverly, and it gave me some inspiration. And I've created a few drafts just to help give you some ideas of what the final design may look. All of these are rough, so none of these are final yet. So, here's one. This is the second one I've created. This is the third one I've created. The lines in the middle are also supposed to represent the historic trails of Victorian town. This is the fourth one. And I started a, I had a survey, I created a survey the other day, and I created a few questions, and I've already posted it at school, on School the G, so as you can see for the first question, what major landmarks do you consider unique to Falls Church City and should be promoted? The top three were Cherry Hill Farmhouse, the Farmer's Market, and the State Theater. And then, for which buildings or places should be showcased in the mural, the top three was the Mary Riley Public Styles Library, the Community Center, and City Hall. And the last one, for what artistic style should the mural be, the top one was a variety of different colors. And then, for comments, in terms of representing Falls Church City as a whole, some of the comments were happy and close-knit, positive, a really small, tight community, and some suggestions if anyone added something I missed, they put flowers, add native plants that might not hurt, and the Dogwood Tree, which is our state tree. Thank you for your time, do you have any questions?
We do, I've got a couple of questions for you. So, one, have you spoken to any property owners yet about anyone who might put the mural, allow the mural on their building?
I've been working with Barb Cram, who's head of the Arts and Humanities Council, and I have to first get my final design approved until I move on to where the location will be, but she is currently kind of searching what locations may be available.
And how about, would you paint it yourself, or would someone else paint it?
I would, so I'm specifically, as part of the Gold Award, I'm supposed to be the leader, so I'll be leading and managing the project mostly. I also do want to paint it, which is why I'm kind of coming up with my own designs as well, but I will probably get other artists to help us as well.
Any of you thought about having the City Council feature prominently in your mural?
Yes.
You thought about it, you rejected it, but it's very smart of you, I appreciate that. All right, well, does anyone else have any questions or comments? I think it's a great idea, I'd love to see some murals in Falls Church, really, really good idea.
Could you give us a copy of your presentation? I'd just like to look in more detail at the, you know, survey results, those are interesting, you know, major landmark, what people think are the...
Okay, I can email it, and I also attached, not on this PowerPoint, but I do have the link I could email as well, if you want to fill out the survey yourself.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Vice, well, wait, we've got more questions for you, we're not going to let you leave that easy.
This is a great idea, thanks for coming up with this, I agree, it'd be great to have some public art in Falls Church, murals would be wonderful. Do you need help distributing your survey to the larger community?
Yes, I would like to do that. Right now, I just hope, have it open to my grade, so the senior class. I would also like to get it out to the whole school if I can, and to the city as well.
You know, have you ever, have you spoken to the Chamber of Commerce yet?
I have not.
You might want to consider that, because a lot of business owners and property owners are part of the Chamber of Commerce, and so they might have some ideas about some property, and it might improve the downtown too, create a nice little vibe, so that might be someone you might want to talk to. Vice, Mr. Z?
And also, you know what they say about Carpe Diem's these days, you might start with the Falls Church news press, and that's ably represented tonight by owner and editor Mr. Nick Benton, who's sitting over there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, before, I didn't finish my questions, one of them is that I'd be happy to help you distribute that to the school community and larger community.
Thank you.
And, do you know, I know how to get in touch with you, do you know how to get in touch with me?
The school email?
The school email, yeah.
Okay.
So, I can, if you get in touch with me through the school email, I'm happy to help you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Anything else? Thank you so much for that great presentation and great idea, we appreciate it, and good luck with college next year, and with Girl Scouts as well.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to pin as well? Would you like, come on up for a second, we'll give you a handshake. Okay, we have one more speaker, Ms. Miller-Murren, are you here? I hope I pronounced your name correctly. Oh, I'm sorry, I did, okay, she did already speak. That's the last speaker that I have on our speaker list, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Doesn't seem like it, so let's go ahead and move on to some of our business. Mr. Shields, are there any council requests before we move on to the city manager? Mr. Duncan?
Just one, thank you, I would, the Office of Communications may be on this already, but I just wanted to make sure that we post a link to a very fine NPR story that was on the news tonight, interviewing David Burkey, our registrar, and describing tiny, I'm not sure I like the tiny part, but tiny Falls Church, as on the front lines of the battle against cyber hacking electoral systems, it was a very fine piece. David Burkey, our general registrar, represented the city very well, and it's a very interesting story, done by an old colleague of mine at Congressional Quarterly, Pam Fessler.
Thanks. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Mr. Shields, I just want to make sure that some of these questions are answered that came through here, the one about Bike Share, do you know if Ms. Odenino answered that one?
Yes, Ms. Odenino did send a response to that inquiry, and we had sent a letter out to the adjacents to the Bike Share stations, and we, but we outreach to this person in particular to talk about that station, and I think some changes are being made to that specific station.
To respond to that one, okay. And then, the other ones have also gotten staff responses.
There is one that I'm still working on a response, some of the questions on the school campus planning, and that response will get out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? If not, Mr. Shields, would you like to give us your report?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. I'd like to take the balance of my presentations tonight, allow, to allow Ms. Bawa to provide the community and the City Council with our FY17 year-end financial report. But before we do that, I just, a couple of things to note in brief for the manager's report. One, just for the, for the community, we do have the South Washington Street project is getting underway. It will begin with utility undergrounding, and this is from the stretch from Tenner Hill Road up to Annandale through the Hillwood intersection of South Washington Street. And the utility undergrounding will get the ugly wires underground and prepare the way for future streetscape and walkability improvements, and, very importantly, an intermodal plaza at the intersection of Hillwood and South Washington Street. So, there's two things to announce. One is for the public to be patient with us and the traffic delays, there will be impacts to traffic, obviously, as we're trenching in the middle of the street to bury the conduits, to put the power lines and the phone lines underground. But two, to engage with the public, we have posted on the city's homepage eight panels of the, of an account of historical events in the city's past, and we, those have been developed, working with the community groups, and so what has been posted has been, I think, very thoroughly thought through and considered from a community perspective, but now we'd like to get it out to everybody, and if people have comments on it or suggestions for those write-ups, we'd love to get those. And so, that's available on the city webpage, and that will be a very prominent feature of the plaza that ultimately will be built there at the intersection of South Washington and Hillwood. The other thing I'd like to note, just on the council's schedule, your next work session scheduled for October 2nd is canceled, so our next meeting is October 10th, and that'll be a regular session in this room, but I also want to note for the public that on October 16th, that work session is planned to be a walking tour of the South Washington, of Washington and Broad, of the project that is being proposed by Insight Development Group, and so we want to see on the street what the setbacks would look like, discuss the streetscape features, building heights, and all those design attributes right there on the street where we can all see it together. So, that's a public meeting, the Planning Commission, EDA, boards and commissions will be invited, and of course, all members of the public and interested neighbors should come as well. The developer will be in attendance for that walking tour as well. Afterward, we've done a walking tour of the Washington and Broad location, we then intend to walk to the Lincoln Project, as well as the 301 West Broad Project, just to do a walkthrough of that streetscape, take some notes on the building materials, the finishes on the building, the streetscape design, and discuss that in the context of when we're looking at future site plans, this is what it looks like on a site plan, this is what it looks like when it's built, so that we all kind of develop our skill set in looking at those site plans with a keen eye for what they ultimately look like when they're built. So, that's the intent of that work session, so we're looking forward to that. So, with those two items, now let me turn it over to Ms. Bawa for the year-end financial report, and I'll just say a word or two by way of introduction. One, we did have a meeting of the Budget and Finance Committee last Friday, Chairman Oliver and Councilmember Mary Beth Connolly, along with our school representatives, to take a look at the year-end financials. I'll say just a couple of things, I don't want to steal Ms. Bawa's thunder, but to cut to sort of the bottom line, our year-end FY17 financial report does show a small end-of-the-year contribution to fund balance. Our revenues came in slightly lower than projected, but through managing our finances with the council's leadership, our department directors, we managed our expenses, so we ended the year with a small contribution to fund balance. We'll then take a look at where we stand in the current fiscal year, and we think we're in good shape, and then we'll make some projections, some initial projections for FY19 in the five years going ahead, and that's all set up for a more in-depth discussion of that in a joint session with the City Council and the School Board, a date for which has not yet been set, but we're thinking late November or early December. That's traditionally when we do that FY19 budget planning. And then, lastly, if I could just introduce Deidra McCoughlin, who is with our interim Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, and she was at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting on Friday morning, and it's good to welcome her to this meeting as well. So, with that introduction, Ms. Bawa.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter, and members of the council. We have for you fiscal year 2017 year-end financial report, this is the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017. The next step to looking at the year-end results, as Mr. Shields mentioned, will look at what it means for us as far as our current year budget projections are concerned, and looking at a longer period of time, five years projections, and then talking about what we need to achieve in the next two or three months to get on the track. So, it is a lot of numbers, but I would like to highlight on this slide the total results of fiscal year 17, fiscal results. These are unaudited numbers, and we will have the audited numbers for you later on in the year, close to December, and we don't expect major fluctuations, but the caveat is these are unaudited. Some minor changes could be incorporated. We're looking at year-end under collection of revenues of close to $150,000, and roughly a 1%, saving .8% under spending in our expenditures, resulting in $496,786 in the unassigned fund balance for General Fund. We will look at the revenue categories a little bit in, more in detail in the next few slides, and on the expenditures, I'd like to mention that a third of these underspending was achieved by staff turnover and vacancies, and 15% resulting from the contract saving from the probation services to Arlington, and the remaining due to staff efforts, concerted efforts to stay within their budgets. As we saw in third quarter, the revenues were a little sluggish, but they picked up in the fourth quarter. This slide provides over 10 years' worth of the performance of the city's operating revenues and expenditures. Here are the recession years, 2008, '09, '10, '11, and you can see the expenditures exceeded the revenues. The city tried to make up for those in the following years, 2011, '12, '13, '14, and pretty much on target now for the last two or three years, to make sure the expenditures and revenue budgets and actuals coincide. What does that mean for us in terms of fund balance? The red line shows the 17% target according to the fiscal policy, and the green line shows the 12% target according to the fiscal policy for the City of Falls Church. Again, in the down years, you can see the fund balance was drawn down significantly, and went below the policy targets, which was, again, tried to make up for in the following years, and in this year, we're going to end at 17.5% projected in 2017, with a balance of $410,000, to be a little bit more exact, in General Fund, that's over the 17% target. Looking at the revenue categories that are considered key indicators of the economic trends in the city, these five categories that make up for a fourth of the city's budget, $21 million, roughly a fourth of the city's budget, we can see here that the actuals of the 2017 and the budget for this current fiscal year show a difference of $1,000,000. of the 2017 and the budget for this current fiscal year show a difference of 1.2%, which essentially means the economy needs to grow at 1.2% for us to realize, to meet our budget target for fiscal year 18. Looking at each of those categories a little bit more specifically, personal property tax, vehicle sales grew by 10% in fiscal year 17 over the last fiscal year, year-over-year increase, which is pretty strong compared to the three- and five-year averages, which is in the ballpark of 6% to 7%. The next one is the sales tax, which is which grew 9.4% in 2017, compares about 7% three-year average and 3.5% in five years, so the indication is that it has been growing in the last two, three years more compared to the past. Shows indicates volatility and maybe growth, economic growth, development. Meals tax, fiscal year 17 saw an increase of 8.8% over fiscal year 16, and the three- and five-year averages are in the 3.5% to 4.5% range. Again, this year saw a strong growth in the meals tax. Business license tax saw a growth of 17%, oh, sorry, 4% in fiscal year 17, year-over-year, with the pretty much in concert with the averages, 4.5% to 5% range, three and three- to five-year averages. Those are our key revenue indicators, which will inform, again, our next year's budget development. This is the other taxes, which includes cigarette tax, consumer utility tax, recordation tax, that's the real estate transfer tax, which has been not as significant in its growth, and you'll see a year-over-year growth of 2.7%, and the three- and five-year averages are 2% or less, indicates that the real estate transfer tax is one of the bigger chunks of this, and even the cigarette tax, both are seeing a kind of a steady or a decline on this, and we projected that in the third quarter when we brought the results. So now, looking at the general government operations for the city excluding the debt service for the last five to six years, the red bars show the total expenditures for the general government, the green portion on top shows the interjurisdictional agreements, and the purple portion shows the WAMADA contributions that the city has been making, and the blue line shows the personnel costs. So now, looking collectively, we saw growth in our expenditures in the few years right after the economy was rebounding, and then now we are kind of in a steady area zone, 2016, 17, and even 18 budget in that zone. The decline in 2017 expenditures compared to 2016 is primarily due to the city's contribution rates and the retirement costs. The city's contribution rates dropped from 12.86% to 7.8% in 2017 compared to 2016. This was primarily due to the contributions that the city made for water employees that retired, which reduced unfunded liabilities, so that that helped us, when they calculate the actuarial contributions, it helps us reduce our contribution rate, and 2018 is seeing a growth of 1% over the 2017 rates. The WAMADA expenditures, as we have noticed, have grown, and 2018 seeing the growth even expected over the 17. Personnel is about the same, 21.6 to 400,000 in that range, which is roughly about 57% to 58% of the expenditures, total expenditures minus the debt service. Going on to the next slide, this is focusing more on the personnel costs. The blue bars, the light blue, shows the total salaries. Again, the earlier years, we saw an increase becoming very steady in the last two, three years. Retirement costs, more easily one can identify that we have seen a drop in 2017 compared to 2016. Health and other benefits, post-employee benefits are in the same range, and other fringe benefits like life insurance and others. So kind of, we are in the same range, 2017 overall, the total expenditures were less than 2016, as noted. Now, this next slide shows general government versus school transfers. You're seeing a history of roughly 10 to 11 years here. The blue bar is general government expenditures, little over 30 million to little less than 40 here over a period of 11 years, which is seeing a growth of 21%. The red bar is the school transfers, which is seeing a growth of 38% over the same time That concludes the results for 2017 and comparison to the 2018 budgets. Now, looking and kind of thinking ahead, we will start with prior year averages of how the city has performed in small to a little larger period of time, three, five, and seven years. School transfers have increased at a percentage of 5.7%. They have seen average, three-year average, 7.7% in five years and 4.8 in seven years. For five years, I'd like to mention that most of the five-year averages are higher because that includes the recovery time after the last recession, and three years is when the economy has been more steady, the expenditures and revenues have been in a more steady zone. So general government in the last three years sees saw an increase of 2.1% in revenue growth, organic revenue growth, which is net of any tax increases, including the real estate and the property tax, saw an increase of 3.1% three on an average for the last three years. We have provided the information on the seat enrollment, which is one of the factors that contributes to the school expenditures. So based on these projections, here you will find the fiscal year 18 budget and five years' worth of projections. The total revenues are projected to grow at the three-year average, organic 3.1%, and minus the current debt service as it stands for the city that we have for the current debt, existing debt, and accounting for the WAMADA increases over the next five years, would leave us net revenues, which amount to a 3%, roughly a 3% increase in fiscal year 19 for general government and school transfers as we project today with the data that we have with the fiscal year 17 and the three-year averages with that. Just to put it all in perspective for the impact on the homeowners, this is the CIP impact that we discussed and council made action in July of this year on the full CIP, which includes the school, the George Mason High School project, the city hall, library, and other miscellaneous general government projects. This shows the new debt service that the city would assume based on the full CIP, and the various sources of revenues that we accounted for in the modeling that we did, the additional one and one and a half cents that was increased in 2018 budget, the pension contribution, the amount that would help, another cent and a half, and use of capital reserves to assist us, the existing reserves are roughly at 10 million, and land sale proceeds that start in our model in fiscal year 2023, the others would be accounted for in the future years, the remaining portion, and the tax yield, which again was modeled when we presented the full CIP model, starting in 2022 at the raw rate at this time, ramping up to full payment in another six to eight years from there, resulting in a capital deficit, which would require six cents, additional six cents, starting in next April, and and then a two cents drop in fiscal year 22, which relates to, in average, $700,000 home value, it means an impact of additional $500,000 on the tax bill for residents of Falls Church, dropping to close to $400 in fiscal year 22. Taking a quick look at what all this projection means for our projected fund balance, we are projected to, if the economy holds, because projections do not account for economic contractions, it's expected that we will stay within above our 12% target, however, we will not be able to stay within our 17% target without making additional contributions to our unassigned general fund balance. It ranges from roughly $500,000 in 2019 to roughly $3.6 million in 2023. Next steps, we will be bringing a review of the financial policy as we will be approaching credit rating agencies and also assuming a large amount of debt for the city books. We want to make sure that financial sustainability is a key factor in our consideration, and looking at our reserve policies and debt policy specifically. Will be brought by our financial advisors. In fiscal year 19 budget development schedule, we have a joint meeting between the school board and the city council meeting that's hopefully be scheduled by the end of November, and a review of the budget calendar, which we will provide at our next meeting. With that, I come to the conclusion of my presentation, and welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Also, thank you, Ms. Oliver, for your leadership on the Budget and Finance Committee. Do we have questions? I imagine we do questions and/or comments, we may pull start of the end. Ms. Hardy?
Great, thank you, Ms. Bawa. So flipping back to the close to the beginning, revenue, so we went through all of that fairly quickly, but I think if I followed your presentation, it sounds like the general trend with local taxes that weaken impact was generally a good news story. In fact, you know, we saw numbers as high as kind of 10% FY 17 over 16 for things like personal property taxes, sales tax, meals taxes. Are we able to attribute that to certain new businesses opening in the past year, or is it just more people spending more at the places already opened?
It 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 could, it's attributed to new development as well as cyclical. We did see for sales tax and meal tax, a more of a higher spike in the fourth quarter. It's a trend that we need to review closely, if is it just one time, or is it going to sustain? I am guessing that the new developments and new businesses, specifically new restaurants, have have helped the meal tax to meal tax to grow, but sales taxes are very volatile category, just the year before last was less than a percent growth. We saw year-over-year, so explains how these numbers are budgeted.
Similar for the personal property tax, do we know whether it's new cars coming into the city, or we're just better at assessing the old cars that were already been here?
We saw 500 new cars last year and roughly 200 this year, so it is attributed to new cars. Well, new cars doesn't new to the city, could be used cars, but new residents coming in, so.
Actually, from a communication perspective, the local tax impact, I think is a good story to tell, that, you know, patronizing at local businesses, or when we have new development, places like Harris Teeter or new restaurants opening, that really matters to the bottom line. I think that's a good story to talk about. Going back to expenses, actually, on slide 18, the CIP impact, it's the first time I'd seen these two slides, and so I probably have a lot more questions just to understand it. I know we've talked about four cents being the best-case scenario for the high school project, should the referendum pass for 120 million. So now we're saying six cents, that's for the full CIP that we adopted.
So yeah, thanks for the clarification, I should have mentioned that earlier, the six cents is for the full CIP, of which four cents is for the high school and two cents for other general government.
So mainly like the library, city hall?
City hall, library, and the turf, and the procurement of, I mean, the sale of the land acquisition, sorry.
Is that all going to happen in FY 19, or is some of that going to be spread out in further years?
As per the full CIP, those were modeled for to go march on right ahead, so city hall project is on track, has started, library project has, a project manager has been assigned, and they've started billing their expenditures. We will be bringing specific projects to with their progress, but and we brought the reimbursement resolution, which showed the projects that are on track. So this will, the timing of the projects will be taken into account for issuance of the bond measures, I mean, the bond issuance that's in the.
And I really, I think people can generally understand the median homeowner impact better than pennies in the tax rate. So when splitting that six cents, is it about $300 for the high school, and then 200 for all of the miscellaneous other expenses or something?
Yeah, two-thirds of the 500.
Okay. Help me understand the tax rate decrease in FY 22. Is that when we just think we don't need those pennies anymore, or we just won't have other capital projects?
Since we are taking the full burden upfront with the full CIP, and we're in our model, we are having new land sales come, the initial increases help us keep our, you know, pay down the initial increases, and the school is going to be issued in three tranches with different interest rates that we model, the burden is upfront, and when with the future years, even the current debt tapers off, so at that time, our commitment to debt service should no other new projects come along other than minor 5 million that we model.
I know officially TJ Elementary, for example, has not been in the CIP. Does this include TJ being in those years, 2021, 2022?
No, that was in 25, 26.
I would just be cautious then in showing a tax rate decrease in those two years when we think we probably have a project then.
Yeah, we, yeah, it's built in, but in fiscal year 25, 26 in the model, the TJ was, and these, yeah.
Okay. Last question, on unassigned fund balance. How many pennies do we need if we wanted to stay at 17%? Given that it looks like after FY 19, we're going to be farther and farther from that 17%.
Yeah, so fiscal year 19, we need close to half a million, which is one penny, and fiscal year 20 grows to 1.6 million, which is about four, roughly in the range of 400 plus, because we have to add the AV growth, so it's not exact 400, but thereabout, grows to about seven pennies in fiscal year 21, and eight in 22, and nine cents in 23.
So that's kind of a financial policy decision of whether we want to stay at 17% or whether we want to go back and say, well, it's a range of 12 to 17.
Yeah, the policy calls for two years if we go below 12%, and then three years after that subsequently to come to 17%. So in five years, we are required, the policy calls for coming to 17% target.
Got it. Okay, I think that's it for now, but I may have other questions as we.
Sure.
Thank you.
Other folks, other questions?
Sorry, could I? Of course, back to that one point, the policy calls for us to return to 17 or to return to within the band of 12 to 17?
If we draw below 12, we have two years to come to 12, and then subsequent three years to come to 17, so five years total.
What if we stay above, at or above 12?
Well, the policy wants you to come to 17 within the three-year period.
So the policy actually?
Yes.
Says that we aspire to 17?
That's the target, yes.
The penny impact numbers are different, obviously, if if you take it to 12 and glide back to 17 over a period of time. You don't need to go through those all right now, but, okay, well, I'm sure there'll be animated discussions among many members of council, some of whom don't even sit here today about that when that comes to pass. The question I wanted to ask, if I could, is on the chart on 17, because this really is where the kind of budget guidance that is just beginning to take shape forms, right? So are you saying that in FY 19, roughly a 3% growth is is what we're looking at combined general government and schools?
3% growth, sorry, 3% growth for the revenues, based on the results we have so far, we will be bringing in front of you the first quarter results in the next month or so, and, you know, monitoring where we are in the current fiscal year. you know, monitoring where we are in the current fiscal year. As you know, the budget doesn't get adopted till about, you know, the heat of things till April, but we will see the first quarter and the second quarter results that'll inform the budget process.
We know the budget didn't get adopted till April, but the expectations about what are going to be in the budget are forming even as we speak.
Right. So given indicators so far and the economic conditions, assuming it stays steady, this is what we project the next year to look like. Any fluctuations in the economic landscape
Sure.
can make us, you know, assume different things for the next, and it will give us different guidance for fiscal year 19.
So 3% number, based on what you've just said, what we know now, would be shared between the schools and general government somehow?
That's correct.
Depending on what those who sit in these chairs decide. Okay. I think that's all for right now. I just want to thank you for your charts. I was able to attend the Friday morning meeting and that helps. But, I mean, my general takeaway is that, you know, economic growth has been brisk and a lot of people in the room here and people are outside of the room get credit for that, and that's good news. The budgeting has been tight and we appreciate that. The spending has been careful and we certainly appreciate that. The revenue collection has been aggressive and a lot of people worked hard to make that happen. And, you know, the saving has been prudent. I think we're overall in a good position to take on the, you know, major obligations that, that council has voted to put before the voters in the form of the bond referendum and has already voted on in terms of the library and city hall and other projects that you mentioned. So as I say, you and others have had a lot to do with that and I'd like to thank you for your efforts and also my colleagues for their efforts. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to applaud you for a very crisp, succinct presentation at one of the few instances I've been able to say that I've been able to completely grasp all the details such as they are. Also, want to thank city manager and his staff for bringing you up to speed so quickly. This is an astounding presentation on many fronts. I echo my colleague's sentiment that there will likely be an impassioned discussion about these numbers. Tonight is perhaps not the night to begin that passion. Let me just ask a question here with, two questions, actually. The first one is, we do not have in any of this additional revenues of projects that may occur over time. Is that correct?
So we're looking at three-year averages, which includes quite a few developments, those numbers.
They're not in these charts, are they?
The three-year average includes the developments.
I see, okay.
Otherwise, we've seen a two and a half percent increase over the last 10 years, but the three-year average is a 3.1%, not including any tax increases that you all voted for specific reasons.
So it's not, it doesn't represent the lumpiness that might occur from single large projects. You're just doing a, you know, the finance world, I guess they call it a trailing 12 months and four and six months and that kind of thing, which is helpful. I appreciate the 3% projection that you're looking at. The other question I have is maybe one due to a lack of retaining information here, but I seem to recall that somewhere in '22, there's going to be another 18 to 20 million TJ expansion. Is that cranked into the total CIP at this point or is that outside of the discussion?
The full CIP as voted by council in July included TJ in fiscal year '25.
I see, okay. Well, thank you very much.
Sure.
Maybe, I don't think TJ is formally part of the CIP, but it was formally part of all of our debt service projections. So that chart, that chart there has TJ coming in after the '23, but if you remember those charts that we had where it went out for 30 years, TJ was in those charts.
Right, I recall that. And so I just didn't remember exactly where it's located. And I do appreciate this presentation. It's kind of like weather forecasting. You know, you tell us that Hurricane Maria is going to make landfall, you just can't tell us where it's going to come. So it's kind of like that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Connolly and then Ms. Oliver.
Thank you, Ms. Bawa. One of the things that we talk about sometimes is how we're doing compared to other jurisdictions. And we probably, you probably don't have those numbers yet because they're still working on their year end. Last year, as we planned the budget, we were optimistic that we were doing better than most in our region.
I do not have any specific data on any cities so far. We have Stephen Fuller's report that's going to be available next week to us. And I was in New York to attend the National League of Cities Conference where cities across the nation came and the discussion was recession and the aftermath, how the revenues have grown, but they haven't grown enough to cover the expenditure growth for many cities. There are cities that are struggling with all kinds of, you know, things, pension costs and other costs that are increasing across the board. So having said that, cities are seeing growth, but they're also very cautious in the couple of years ahead because we are in the ninth year of our recovery since the last recession. So people in the elected officials, there were some senators and some elected officials there and fiscal heads of various cities. So that was the notion and that was the sentiment I got across the board.
And my other question is just because I don't want to be unnecessarily optimistic, but I really want to talk a minute about the sales tax, meals tax, and personal property tax that have gone up. And I know that makes up a very small portion of our budget, but especially the meals tax. It seems like every year we talk about this. We say, well, it's just increased incrementally and it must be the same people going to new restaurants as new restaurants open. But this really seems to be the first time that we've been able to move the needle and follow what, you know, Mayor Tarter was so interested in making sure that our downtown looked better and people would be able to walk around and we're adding more people and so we have more people to eat at those restaurants. And I think that both, all those numbers, personal property, sales tax, and meals tax, are a reflection of the work that staff and council has put into building up the revenue base of the city so that we have more commercial revenue in addition to our residential properties.
Yes, I do want to mention that it has been a team effort on our end. You know, we do the projections and realize our actuals, but there are departments out there that are going after delinquencies. You see, we are below the revenue target. However, a lot of it got picked up in the fourth quarter as we saw the third quarter was showing a negative trend and we came to council that we may have to draw out of the fund balance. So extra effort went into making, reverse that trend.
So that's good. And just one more thing I want to say, and that is anyone who's watching this, I really want to encourage everyone to shop and eat locally intentionally. Make sure that you, when you have to buy tires, you buy them in the city of Falls Church because that's $800. And when you have to buy food, you buy it in the city of Falls Church and clothing and anything else so that we can keep these trends going up. And it really does matter. And I think sometimes people don't think about it. So I would just want to encourage people to intentionally shop within our borders.
Ms. Oliver and then back to Ms. Hardy.
So first, I want to thank the Budget and Finance Committee and also I want to thank staff for responding to the lively discussion that we had. You know, the tweaks weren't many to these slides, but I think they've made them much more understandable and it's something that I think the general public can look at and start to absorb. Having said that, I just want to throw out one or two cautionary notes, some concerns that we talked about in Budget and Finance that weren't raised here. And I just, I want to make sure that council does not lose sight of the fact. One of our shortfalls on the revenue side was in other revenues. That was partially related, was it not, to the failure of the Founder's Row project to go forward? We are counting on some of those revenues in the current year budget and if that does not go forward, we will see the lumpiness that Mr. Z talked about. So that's a concern. And I also want people, when they're looking at these slides carefully, to look at '18 and '19 together and take a look at the way in which the decline in the fund balance is what we are doing to stabilize the impact on the taxpayer. And we need to consider whether that's a strategy that we can actually adopt and how long we can sustain that. And on slide 20, you talk about the next steps. And a key next step is to look at the financial policy review. The current CIP does not comply with our current financial policies. We have had numerous discussions about our financial policies. This council chose not to modify them. It said they would take it up when and if the CIP was approved. So we are trying to get that done after the referendum is voted upon. But I think it's very important for people to understand that we are not in compliance with our financial policies when we approve the CIP. Please stay involved as we review those.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Great. Just a clarifying question on slide 17, because I know that as Womata becomes a bigger and bigger, higher percentage of our expenditures, is that 3% growth after taking out Womata expenditures, if I'm understanding your slide correctly?
The 3% at the bottom?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So we shouldn't have to worry about, this is what we expect, we have to pay Metro, and so we shouldn't expect to have to take a big chunk of the remaining revenues left for Womata, because I know that's what we were dealing with a lot in the last budget cycle.
That's after accounting for the current debt service and the Womata expenditure subsidy.
That sounds like good news, then.
I think as far as the guidance I'm taking from Ms. Bawa right now in terms of our early financial planning is we're viewing the 3% as the best case scenario. And we're just very respectful of the fact that we, the CIP is a very significant financial undertaking and that our operating budgets are going to need to be tailored and every spending decision we make is going to have to be made with an eye of these major obligations we're taking on.
And also, I'd like to add to that, that the last time the assessed values dropped by roughly 15% over two years at the last recession. So this assumes a 3.1% growth, given the three-year average, but economic conditions do provide a lot of guidance and factor into this.
Okay, are there other questions or comments? I think you've done an excellent job.
Mr. Mayor, Dave Snyder. I didn't want to interrupt anyone else's questions. Could I ask a couple?
Of course, of course.
And I'm not interrupting anybody, am I? Okay. Well, thanks. First of all, we're testing out the new telephone system tonight, so I think it's working quite well. So thank you for that. I think it's a real improvement. Two quick questions. Did these numbers include a full year of Harris Teeter? That's the first question.
That's correct. They started in July of '16.
Okay. The second question is, it seems to me that the question of living within our means comes up a lot and it seems to me that certainly this year demonstrates that. So my question is, the money that you're advocating be placed in the unassigned fund balance, for the public's benefit, what happens to that money once it goes into the, to the fund balance? It'll be used presumably to offset other costs, otherwise we return it to the taxpayers. But in essence, that will happen, won't it, as a result of what we use the unassigned fund balance for? Is that right?
Are you asking about the overage for this fiscal, last fiscal year that we are showing as a net increase to the unassigned fund balance? That would be something that we should look at collectively when we do the fiscal year 19 budget development. We will be looking at the operating budget, the capital budget by the time we would have issued our first bond and having gone through the rating agencies, so we'll, and have reviewed our financial policies. So that'll give us a better idea of what we really want to do with those funds.
So that's not lost money, that's money
No, it's not lost money.
that will offset what would otherwise be a cost that would ultimately be borne by the taxpayers. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. And I would just like to support the comments that other council members have made. This is overall a very positive picture, but that we all know that we have challenges and we'll work through those. So thanks much.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a very good presentation. We appreciate it. My only comments, really, I think most of the council members have picked up the thoughts or questions I might have had, but I think it really emphasizes the fact that we need to show budget discipline going forward in these coming years. It's really critical to keep our operating budgets under control. As you look at these numbers, they can be daunting. There's a lot out there. So I think that really is incumbent upon both us and the school, school side to keep our budgets under control and at the levels contemplated here. So anyway, a lot of work to do. Thank you so much for what you've done to date. And unless there's any other questions, I appreciate you coming out this evening.
Thank you.
All right. Fairly light agenda tonight. As I read it, there are no second readings or resolutions this evening. Let's go to the consent agenda, if there is anything on the consent agenda. Let's take a look.
Mayor, I would like to move approval of the items on consent, which consists of appointments, new appointment of Julie Harrison to the Historic Architecture Review Board, reappointment of Tori McKenney to the Housing Commission, reappointment of Miriam Ward to the Aurora House Citizens Advisory Committee, the reappointment of Paul Baldino to the Nova Parks Board, and the city council's request to make the recommendation that the city attorney submit a precipice and order to the Arlington County Circuit Court requesting the appointment of Joshua Showcord to the city's Board of Equalization to fill the unexpired term and as well as the following three-year term. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything that anyone wants to remove from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I wanted to second Mr. Z's motion.
Oh, you made the motion. I'm sorry. Okay. So there's no, nothing to be removed from the consent agenda. We do have a second. Why don't we go ahead and just do a roll call? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly? Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
And before we move on, let me just ask, we have been doing updates on the campus planning, which we, I didn't hear anything this evening. Is there anything you wanted to add before I move on to the tail end of this agenda, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. I would just note, the meeting that was reported in the newspaper and in by the city is the meeting with Governor McAuliffe and the Secretary of Transportation, Mr. Lane. In addition, there were University of Virginia and Virginia Tech representatives at this meeting, as well as representatives of the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. And the meeting was city officials with, with these state officials as a part of our continuing and ongoing efforts just to engage with their partners so that in the event that the voters approve the referendum in November, we will be poised to act quickly with all of our, with all resources to try to implement the plans as we've described them. And the meeting was very positive. I think that the state officials and the governor, who have been informed of this project in the past, were very interested in it. They think it's, it's one that does have statewide interest, not just local interest in terms of, of the potential to be able to have a very successful development there so close to UVA and Virginia Tech and so close to I-66 and West Falls Church Metro. So I just want to report on that meeting and be happy to answer any questions about it. There are no specific actions that came out of it, but it was just a continuation of the dialogue and the communications that we've endeavored to have with our partners over the past three years. Second, I would just note that, that I have been asked to attend a meeting tomorrow with the Parent Teachers Association. I will be joined by Superintendent Noonan and I think the PTA has asked that we be there to answer questions that they have about the referendum and so we plan to do that. Other updates, we are trying to respond to all questions that come in and we're also referring people, really trying to drive people to the city's webpage where we think we have a pretty full set of information for the public that hopefully is understandable and legible and helpful to voters as they consider their decision on November 7.
Okay, Vice Mayor Connolly.
Mr. Shields, some of, like the questions that came in from Mr. Quave specifically, you're answering those to him. I'm just wondering I'm just wondering, because he's asked these questions in this forum, is there a way to get those answers out to more publicly? Is there a site on the, is there a spot on the city website where those questions could be answered for other people as well?
Well, it's a good question. And our thinking about how to communicate effectively on this, we have had discussions about having an FAQ. And what we, what has happened to us is we've gotten overwhelmed by the FAQ and it becomes a document that's very long. And so instead, we've tried to sort of break the discussion into discrete pieces so people can go to those places and hopefully, without too much trouble, find the information they're looking for. So we have not tried to assemble all the questions we've gotten into a consolidated document.
So I'd like to encourage us to, to do those. Because I, I do think that if, I think these questions are out there and there are other questions that people have and those that are able to attend meetings will probably get a lot of their questions answered and those that aren't will be looking for those answers. And if you've already done the work, it might make sense to be able to share them with others. But I agree that FAQs that are 75 questions long are really just overwhelming and, and difficult. So I, I know we haven't yet come up with the perfect solution, but we've got some time.
Okay, other questions, comments, business not on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question for the city manager. One of the questions which I keep getting from constituents is if the referendum isn't approved, what is the investment that will be needed at GMHS and over what period of time? The superintendent laid that out during the Sunday forum. My question is, are those the numbers that we use to answer that question?
I know the superintendent is, is preparing numbers on that and we have not been given a formal set of numbers for what an alternative plan would be for us to run through our debt service model or to, you know, put together a financial strategy on. And so I do think it's appropriate that that number come from the school administration because it would need to be programmatically sound. But when we get that number, we would turn that around pretty quickly to get, get a response out in terms of what that would be, in terms of how, how we would finance, you know, an alternative strategy.
So do you expect that pretty soon, to get those numbers? Thank you.
I'll follow up, I'm, yeah, I'll follow up with the superintendent to, to see what the status of, of that request is.
Okay, or Mr. Z?
Nope, we're done here.
Okay. Let's, let's make sure we're done. Yes, Vice Mayor Connolly.
Mr. Shields, the number that was mentioned in one of those meetings, and again, I think it's being refined, was about $70 million to do renovations in addition. That amount of money would require another referendum, is that correct?
That's correct.
I mean, and again, we're, we don't know what that final number is, but anything over $10 million requires another referendum?
That's about right. It's 10% of the operating budget, so 10 million is very close to that.
Okay.
About nine million.
So if, if this referendum is not passed, then there would be another.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else? Any standing or regional committee or council liaison reports? All right, any additional council member comments? It doesn't look like there's any minutes to approve. Okay, well, I don't think there's much more to be done. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Here, I move to adjourn.
All right, what do you say? We are, we are, that's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have. We are adjourned.